I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight to the, wow, November 13th meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. Glad to see a full house. Appreciate you coming out. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Odom for offering the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
This time, I want to call Reverend Russell Ward to the podium to have our invocation.
Just bow together as we pray. Almighty, ever-loving God, we thank you for this free land where our citizens seek you in many different ways, call you by many different names. We hope for so much from these men and women we have elected to represent us. We ask that you be present in their deliberations as they work together for the best interests of this lovely place where we live. May the respectfulness of their discussions and the wisdom of their decisions set an example that people with different opinions can live together in the peace that you intend. Here are our prayers, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Ward. Appreciate that. Okay, at this time, are there any additional agenda items?
Madam Chair, I'd like to add that under new business item I, to consider the purchase agreement or purchase of property located on Oakland Road.
Okay.
On which road?
Oakland Road.
Okay, any other additional items?
I have a Commissioner request.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to do that during official comments or add it as an agenda item? Okay, just put it as J. All right, any other additional items? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
With the addition of the amendments to...
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, thank you. Okay, the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
I have a couple. Is there any reason we can't move? The item G and B are pretty much the same. Is there any reason we need to discuss that?
Do we need to have those done in open session as action items?
The second one actually fills the seat that the bylaws allow for anyway, says the chief.
Is that okay? Well, we have, we have, we have the, okay, all right, all right. Just wanted, it came to the meeting for that, I just want to make sure. Okay.
I was going to call it. Item F is another one.
Okay.
Is there any need for further discussion on the savings aspect of it is all being focused?
I would think the only reason we would discuss it is so public, we're going to be closing down a day of the...
It didn't require discussion, it just required an announcement.
Okay. I can take care of that. Okay, so B, under new business, G, under new business, and F, under new business. But remind me to speak to that in the Commissioner's comments, one of them. Okay?
You don't want to reveal the consent agenda.
And we'll just make the announcement of the change during Commissioner's comments. Okay? So B, F, and G to consent agenda. Okay?
Is that a motion to move that?
Yes. Correct, Commissioner Reese? Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you very much. So now, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. And before we move into Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Dodson, sorry, but good to see you gentlemen. Thank you for coming out.
You can still speak if you want.
Stay, stay.
Just to not stop.
I know, before we change our minds. Commissioner Dodson sent his regrets. He is not feeling well this evening and graciously decided not to share what he has with the rest of us. So he is here in spirit, but I'm sure watching, and we hope he's better soon. Okay, Commissioner's comments, Ms. Keely Wood.
Commissioner of the public.
I mean, public comments, I'm sorry. I was still thinking Commissioner Dodson there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Keely.
Hi, Keely Wood, 363 Angel Road. I've been speaking out against fracking for over five years. I saw firsthand how it destroyed my uncle's dairy farms and the community in northwest Pennsylvania. I witnessed a change in Lee County's attitude and opinions towards fracking. If you took a poll in the county, I know a majority of residents don't want to see our roads damaged, our wells contaminated, and the abuse of forced pooling used on our lands. We now have states signing on for banning fracking. We are not alone in this path. My complaint with this constitutionality of the MEC was filed on January 5th, 2015, followed by a lawsuit from a group of Chatham County residents who are also here. I believe there are over seven filings against fracking in North Carolina. Until the North Carolina Supreme Court hears the first case, a permit for fracking will not be approved. In the meanwhile, more North Carolina communities are taking a stand against this dirty energy that promotes climate change. In 2012, Dina recognized that questions still remained about the health impacts fracking would have on North Carolina residents. They still have not done a health impact study, even though it has been requested. But there are over 800 vetted scientific papers and peer-reviewed articles on PSR.org, Physicians for Social Responsibility. Don't let local bullies intimidate or threaten your decision to look for more answers. What is best for all the residents of Lee County? The environmental risks of fracking simply outweigh any potential benefits. Thank you for extending this fracking moratorium and for being a good steward of our land.
Ms. Martha Girallami, did I pronounce that right? Help me.
Hello, I'm Martha Girallami. I'm from Chatham County. I live on Mount Piska Church Road on the northeast side of Lake Jordan. That puts me in the Triassic Basin. And yes, everything that Keely said, fracking, we went to Demick, Pennsylvania to see it, and we understand how much fracking has really destroyed many counties. And in Pennsylvania, West Virginia, as fracking just become, takes over, you just cannot, the landscape, the viewscape is all tanks and pipelines and land disturbance, and the air quality is horrible. When I went to Pittsburgh a few years ago to go to a fracking, you know, information conference, we really had trouble breathing after a few days. But that's just, I just wanted to make a few comments because we've had, you know, supposed expert come to Chatham County, and at least it got us thinking again. He did give us a report, we've gone over it, made us think again. We realized how little, in some ways, he knows, and how little we all know about fracking. There are just so many missing pieces. And also, fracking information has moved ahead. And also, there are areas of fracking that really we don't understand, like the interface of fracking in our particular geology, which is tipped, some of it shallow, we have diabase dikes in it, we have other, we have things like that. We have these pocket aquifers, and how, and we have a lot of water, a lot of water in the area. And what, how is it going to interact? And our consultant could not tell us. He said he looked, he could not find anything about, it was very little written about really shallow fracking that needs to be looked at. How, you know, there is information in the sense that shallow fracking is very much more likely to pollute any waters, any drinking waters. As soon as you begin to pollute your groundwater, your surface water, they begin to intermix, you both get definitely polluted. So I guess what I want to say is that let's take time with the moratorium to see what we can find out with the vertical well drilling, you know, if it's going to be vertical. Vertical is recommended evidently for shallow deposits. Let's look at the impacts of shallow fracking again. What can we do? Are setbacks adequate? We really need to think about, we still have not really, in our Mining and Energy Commission, well, it's now oil and gas laws and regulations, never really dealt with, you know, what kind of spacing you should have between water and your fracking deposit. And also, what about more research on diabase, dikes and cells, which are really prevalent in this area, and look at, what are we going to our wastewater? That was never dealt with. You know, it was just like, it's, sure, it's just going to go to Sanford wastewater treatment plant, well, great. And what about, you know, what about recycling? And what kind of waste come out of each recycling step? And what is this, there's no real good data in the recycling.
Right, right, yeah.
Is that one that came up in one of our discussions is about the gathering line and the distribution pipelines.
If you, if you want to send your comments to us on our email, that'd be great. Okay, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Ms. Jeannie Ambrose, and I'm sorry, we do have the three-minute time limit on the public comments. My apologies.
Well, I know what to expect. Run, drag Chatham County residents out of here. I'm Jeannie Ambrose of 675 Lichen Trail, Pittsboro. In July 2017, the Chatham County Board of Commissioners voted to extend their fracking moratorium to allow more time to expand and complete Dr. Charles Jewell's study, hydraulic fracturing background assessment for Chatham County, North Carolina. Based on his findings, they determined that the extension was needed. As stated in Section 7, Action and Schedule, the study will include the most current analysis of impacts in localities similar to Chatham County in other states, and the effectiveness of local ordinances in managing those impacts. What happens in Lee County will affect us in Chatham, and local governments need to share as much information as possible on how to handle the negative impacts of fracking. By working together, local officials and their staff can begin to see the potential financial, socio-economic, health, and environmental risks from fracking activities, and then develop and apply ordinances to minimize these effects, these risks. Effective ordinances and a rigorous enforcement of these ordinances must be in place to help protect our natural resources and the health and safety of our communities in the long run. To maintain fiscal sustainability, local government must also find ways to pay for future infrastructure damages and expansion of social and medical services. And I also want to add that the drinking water quality problems are already present in the Cape Fear River Basin. For example, contaminants like hexavalent chromium, 1,4 dioxide, the P4s and Pfos, we may know them as C8 and Genx, are all detectable contaminants. And the accidental release of fracking chemicals could be another source of contamination to ground and surface water. And we may not even know what chemicals they'll be using if there's not disclosure. So we can't take clean drinking water for granted. Passing the moratorium extension in Lee County would be both a reasonable and prudent step at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose. Ann Mathis?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ann Mathis, 2010, Lee Avenue, Sanford, North Carolina. I'm not very good at this, so please bear with me. I am a native-born citizen of North Carolina. I was raised in western North Carolina, but have lived in the Lee County community since 1971. I would like to ask that you extend the moratorium against fracking. My niece worked as an engineer for Schlumberger in Texas and Oklahoma for several years. I've heard the stories about the lifestyle, about the safety issues, about the earthquakes. And yes, there are contrary to comments that have been made in this very room over the years, safety issues, for the employees and the communities where fracking is allowed to operate. Fracking causes earthquakes. The companies know it, the employees know it. We have not, in many cases, been good stewards of our planet. We need to move in another direction regarding our energy sources and their uses. The oil and gas products that have already been extracted have caused great damage to our natural resources and wildlife. Because we are human, and we do not always handle these products with great care, they have caused undue harm in our state. I have worked as a wildlife rehabilitator specializing in birds of prey and as a wildlife educator since 1993. I have seen firsthand what the oil and gas industry and the careless handling of these products have done to our native wildlife. I had to attend a memorial service in Swansboro, North Carolina, Saturday morning. After the service, I was talking to a friend, and the very first question she asked me was, what's going on with the fracking issue in Sanford? These folks are three hours away, but they are keeping an eye on decisions being made in our community. When I was growing up, our family used to spend vacations at the Outer Banks, and I remember one summer, we were there, and there'd been a tanker spill at sea, and the beaches were covered in tar. The tar stuck to everything. It ruined our trip that year. We really need to move away from our dependency on oil and gas products. No fracking, no pipeline, no offshore drilling. In closing, I would just like to comment that I attended my niece's wedding in Texas this past March. I saw a great deal of Texas and Oklahoma file on the trip. Granted, they are big states, but they do not compare in any way to the beauty of our great state. Please, let's keep it that way. Please extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mathis. Debbie Hall?
I'm Debbie Hall, 957 Cumknock Road, Sanford, North Carolina. I'm here, first of all, to thank you for this vote to extend the moratorium. I think it's so important. Our governor recently used the phrase, "people before profit," and in reference to some environmental issues, that it's time to put people before profit. And I think that's so important, and certainly important to those of us that live on split estates and won't have any say-so over what happens if fracking comes to Lee County. I want to share something with you that a friend shared with me that is, that I shared with all my neighbors. It's given us hope. It's given us a big glimmer of hope. I think all of us have heard, you have heard, and certainly we have heard as residents and taxpayers in our state, that sometimes things are a done deal. And I hate that phrase. I think you do, too. It's a phrase that makes me think of bullying. And I think so many times, people don't speak out because they don't think they can make a difference. Today, you all are making a difference for me. You're making a difference for my neighbors to help get more answers about fracking before and if, hopefully it never does come to Lee County, but certainly we're giving ourselves time to get more answers. The Ohio court holds deed reserving all the minerals and coal did not reserve oil and gas. And if I may, I'll give this to Ms. Parish, but in Ohio's seventh district court of appeals, they just decided that all of the minerals and coal did not mean oil and gas. And I think some of you have thought that as well. It didn't mean oil and gas. In Cumknock, it meant brownstone, it meant coal, but it didn't mean oil and gas. And it certainly didn't mean helium. In reaching its decision, the court applied ordinary principles of contract interpretation. I don't even know what that is, Ms. Parish, but it sounds very sensible. And heavily relied upon the Supreme Court decision of Ohio's decision in Detler versus Holland to conclude that the parties to the deed did not intend to reserve oil and gas because the deed predated the development of oil and gas in Ohio. And it certainly predated the development of oil and gas in Lee and Chatham County. In 1925, when the mine blew up, I'm sure they weren't thinking about helium. They weren't thinking about what we're looking at now. So this is really important to us. I think it sets a precedent. I'm going to give it to Ms. Parish, if that's okay.
When was that done?
This was...
Okay.
You've seen it?
No, no, she said, she called time on us. So it's very recent. Okay.
Yeah, we learned that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, and we'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that. Thank you, Ms. Hall. All right. Okay, now, near and dear to my heart, we need a presentation. I'd like to call Mr. Bill Stone and Mackenzie Roach?
Yep.
Okay, just...
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners, for having us here tonight and giving us a few minutes to talk about something that we truly enjoy, and that's agriculture. And anytime we can promote and educate about agriculture, we try to take that opportunity. And Farm City Week is really a great chance to do that. Farm City Week, as many of y'all know, is an annual event where we try to highlight the value and the importance of the rural and urban partnership and the interconnectedness between those, between those two entities. Tonight, I'm excited to welcome one of our guest speaker, our 4H guest speaker, Ms. Mackenzie Roach. And Mackenzie is from our 4H Young Commissioners Club, who many of y'all have had the pleasure of working with and seeing on a number of occasions. I'd also like to recognize Mackenzie's mom, Kim, who's here with us tonight, as well as our 4H club leader for the Young Commissioners, Ms. Cindy Howenstein. So at this time, I will go ahead and turn it over to Mackenzie to tell you a little bit about how agriculture has impacted her and what it means to her personally, and also invite you to a few special events that'll be related to Farm City Week. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Dowdwell and Lee County Commissioners. Sorry, I'm speaking to the young part. As he said, I'm Mackenzie Roach, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the 4H Lee County Young Commissioners Club and the Lee County Cooperative Extension Center. Over the past couple of weeks, while preparing this presentation, I was tasked to reflect on agriculture's influence within my life. From the cotton and the clothes we wear to the eggs we have for breakfast, agriculture is everywhere. With this in mind, the first thing I thought about when it came to agriculture in my life was a little less big picture. While I was growing up, my grandmother lived in Baltimore, and we would visit her often. I loved visiting her for so many reasons, but one of my favorites was her garden. While she had two, my favorite was her backyard garden. She was constant, her backyard was filled with herbs, peppers, tomatoes, and other seasonal vegetables that she grew. I used to run around her backyard collecting herbs to go along with her freshly picked tomatoes in one of the most amazing homemade lasagnas I've ever had. This little haven of growth showed me how beautiful the ability to foster the growth of such an important part of our life is. Along with an appreciation for good tomato sauce, my grandmother instilled in me a love of my community. On any given Saturday in the summer, my grandmother and I could be found at the local farmer's market, and it was there that I first witnessed the effect agriculture had on the community. Within our own community, Lee County, agribusiness contributes $283 million annually and employs over 10% of the workforce. Through the Young Commissioners program that I participated in this summer, I gained a greater understanding of this impact that agriculture, this impact that agriculture had. My 4H club, the Lee County Young Commissioners, is a group dedicated to civic understanding and building the future leaders of tomorrow. But what drew me to this program personally was its focus on community. This focus on community has been a part of 4H since it was founded over 100 years ago. In 1909, 4H got its start in youth corn and tomato growing competition clubs as a way to promote new technology and growing techniques provided by the Cooperative Extension Centers in the area. More than 100 years later, and youth and technology are still the future of not only agriculture, but our nation. I'd like to invite you to celebrate Farm City Week with us at the annual banquet on Monday, November 20th, in order to highlight the critical note of agriculture in our community, as well as the importance of making sure the next generation is aware of its significance in our lives. The social hour will begin at 5:30 PM, and the program starts at 6:00. This year's themes will be reshaping the landscape, highlighting the role and impact Lee County women are having on local agriculture. The next morning, November 21st, we invite you to join us for the Lee County Farm City Week Ag Tour. We will meet at the McSwain Center for ham, biscuits, muffins, coffee, and juice at 8:00 AM, and depart from the office at 8:30. The first stop will be Watson's Nursery in Broadway to learn more about their horticulture operation and tour the site. After leaving Watson's, the group will head down to JJ's Place to visit their newest location in Broadway and hear about some of the creative things they're doing to market to and reach new customers. We hope you can join us for an enjoyable morning as we spotlight a few of our local ag businesses and highlight the vibrant local agriculture industry in Lee County. Also, please join us for the 2017 Farm City Ladies Luncheon, scheduled for November 29th on a Wednesday, from 11:45 to 1:00 PM at the Extension Center. The program's theme this year is Bridging the Gap, and the speaker will be noted, our state columnist, Bill Thompson. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you'll be able to join us at these upcoming Farm City events.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Appreciate it. And we have a proclamation that I'll read, and we need to vote on. The 2017 Farm City Proclamation, whereas the American farmers literally help feed and clothe the world by producing a bounty of agricultural products, and whereas rich agricultural resources contribute to the health and well-being of our country and to the strength of our economy, and whereas the growth and development of Lee County and the well-being of all its citizens are dependent upon cooperation and exchange between our rural and urban communities, and whereas the hard work and successful cooperation between rural and urban communities will continue to play a vital role in our future, and whereas the complexities of individuals' environments and the divergence of their activities may lead to a widening gap of misunderstanding, and whereas misunderstanding must be eliminated if our American way of life is to endure, and whereas Farm City Week provides an unparalleled experience for farm and city people to become better acquainted. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim the period of November 16th through 23rd, 2017, to be Farm City Week, and call upon citizens in rural and urban areas to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all those who, working together, produce and supply our community and nation with an abundance of agricultural products. We do further call upon all citizens of this county, city, and town to participate in the joint visits, seminars, and civic and social events associated with a successful Farm City Week in Lee County.
Madam Chair, I move that we, as a board, accept the proclamation recognizing Farm City Week, 2017.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Look forward to next week. It's a great week. And thank you, especially Mackenzie, for being here.
You did a great job.
Yes, you did. Very good. And tell the rest of the Young Commissioners hello. Okay, moving on to old business. The second reading and vote on ordinance extending temporary moratorium on oil and gas development and mining in Lee County. Ms. Parish?
December 7th of 2015, the board adopted the original moratorium on oil and gas development and mining within Lee County. It was adopted to allow the county to have more time to study the potential effects of oil and gas development in the county, and to provide an opportunity to update the land use plan. At October 2nd... At October 2nd, 2017, board meeting, the board voted to hold a public hearing on the moratorium. That hearing was held at our last regular meeting on October 16th, 2017. Nine people spoke in favor of the moratorium, and one person spoke in opposition. After the public hearing, there was the first reading and the first vote on the, um, the ordinance. And so it's now being placed back on the agenda for a second reading and vote, and it would extend the moratorium for 24 months.
I just, I move...
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item B, under old business, consideration of upset bid offer for property located at 109 South Third Street. Ms. Parrish?
Yes, um, so if you recall, this property has been on the agenda many times, um, since, I guess it was originally back in June. Um, we had a bidding war of sorts between two, um, individuals, and we received the last, um, the third upset bid on September 1st from Christian Campos. Um, that was in the amount of $15,000. We advertised that in the Secret Herald on September 27th, and at that time, no one submitted any further upset bids. So at this point, I'm just asking for the board to accept the final upset by Mr. Campos, um, authorize the chair to sign all the documents necessary, and then I can, um, close on the property and also refund the other individuals' money for his bid deposits.
Okay. Any questions, comments on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you for your diligence on that. It's a lot back and forth. Okay, uh, new business, item A, um, the financial statement presentation, Ms. Mentor. Let's see, we've got it?
Yes, um, at your desk, you should find a copy of your financial statements. We received our approval from State on Thursday, and so they brought the statements with us today. So, um, inside your financial statement, you'll find a copy of the PowerPoint presentation for this evening. So... First thing I'll do is introduce Mr. Stuart Hill, who is here from the audit firm Thompson Price Scott Adamson Company, who performed our annual audit. And he will come speak to you about our audit opinion and any other comments he has on the audit, and then I'll come back and, um, go over the numbers with you.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Hill, good evening. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you as well. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to do this again this year. Would also like to thank, um, Lisa and her staff and, and other department employees that were very helpful throughout the audit process, um, by providing the information we requested and answering any questions that may have arisen during the process. So we really appreciate, appreciate that. Everybody was very cooperative, so, um, it makes it easier for us. As far as the opinion, um, once again, you've got a clean opinion, everything's fine. Your, your financial statements, um, in our opinion, present fairly and accurately the financial position and activities of Lee County for the fiscal year end in June 30, 2017. So, um, good, good for you guys. And again, uh...
It's good to hear.
I'd like to, I'd like to say what a, what a magnificent job that Lisa does, her and her staff, and whoever else helps her. You're very fortunate to have, have her.
We are.
I promise you that there's none any better that we do than right here. So we appreciate that. And I'm, I'm sure you do as well.
Yeah.
Again, thank you for allowing us to do it, and, um, I'll turn it back over to Lisa.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hill. We appreciate it. And we completely agree.
Well, thank you. I wasn't, I didn't pay him for that. I was not expecting that, so I do, um, but I do thank you. Okay, tonight's discussion topics, I'll go over the general fund activity with you. Uh, we'll review our fund balance position for the general fund. Um, I will go over our debt position as it relates to our financial, um, strategies. And capital, and I've added capital projects this year since we have several going. Um, I thought I'd give y'all an update on those, and then I'll have a time for questions. Or feel free to ask me questions as we proceed through this. As far as the general fund goes for fiscal year 2017, um, we, our revenues and our transfers totaled $69,705,319. That is a slight decrease from fiscal year 2016. A .71% or $496,038. And that's made up of several different things. The big one is the amount of money that was transferred in was lower this year because of the way we handled the transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund and back for channel debt. Uh, our revenues are pretty much, as you know, our largest revenue source is Avalorum Taxes. That's followed by local option sales tax being the second largest. And then we have our, um, restricted intergovernmental makes up the third largest. And then after that, it's a, you know, most of the other revenue sources are small. Sales and services make up about 4%. Just to give you a breakdown between the two fiscal years, the burgundy bar is fiscal year 2016-17, and 2015-16 is the more, um, purple-blue bar. So in most cases, you'll see that our revenues were up in each of the categories. Intergovernmental was down a little bit, and again, that is representative of some funding differences. Um, daycare started being paid directly by the state through EBT cards during the year, so revenues and expenditures both went down in those categories along with some other changes. Sales and services were down slightly also, um, but most of the others were up for the year, over the prior year. Property tax revenues totaled $41,640,000, $40,661, which is an increase of 2.04% from fiscal year 2016. And again, you see a large increase from 14, 15 to 15, 16 because of the property tax change. Property tax rate change, excuse me. Assessed value for the year ended up totaling $5,182,395,669, which is an increase of 1.92% from fiscal year 2016. So there's a little bit of growth there. Residential commercial base, just to give you this to show you the breakdown of our, um, real property between residential and commercial, and you'll see that, um, probably the majority of our increase was, um, a lot of it was in the commercial base. It seems to be growing a little bit faster than the residential. Hopefully, we'll see that kind of bouncing out some again. As far as property tax collections go, our tax department's done an outstanding job again for the year. We had a total of 99.16% of the levy collected. We had 99.08% excluding the motor vehicles. Um, we show 100% collection of motor vehicles, but let me tell you, we only get to report what we know was collected. So we know there are bills that are sent out or things that may be going out that aren't being paid in a timely manner. But the way the state has us presenting that now, we show 100% of it collected. Our collections exceeded our budget by $1,402,41. Um, sales tax revenue totaled $13,261,165, which was a $1,039,290 increase or 8.5% over fiscal year 2016. Some of that is, if you remember, there was a new Article 44, um, done in this past fiscal year, which is basically a reallocation of some sales tax monies. And so we did benefit about $232,000 of that increase is that, okay? And that is lumped in, you don't see Article 44 on there. On our financial statements, Article 44 is included with Article 39. By the way, the state wants us to present it, so... But you can see, um, we did well in Lee County as far as growth goes. Article 40 is the one that's still split by the state per capita, and so it was kind of flat. But you'll see there's a significant number change in the 4, 39, 42, and 46. Shows quite a bit of growth. Moving on to expenditures, our expenditures and transfers totaled $67,794,033, which is a decrease of just over 1.2 million from 2016. Human services and education continue to account for the majority of the county's expenditures. This graph just breaks it down by category. Um, for the last five years, we did see a slight drop in our general government expenditures, um, and also in human services. Again, that comes back to the changeover in the daycare and some other, um, programs. Education showed a slight increase, and of course, our debt service showed a slight decrease because we had the refunding in the prior year. Education expenditures, Lee County Board of Education accounted for 37.58% of our budget, and that's including debt service. That's broken down, you can see how much we gave them in each category, current expense, special appropriation, capital. Capital here does include the lottery proceeds, if any lottery proceeds they used. And then you see the debt service, and that all totaled $25,475,974. That's just it broken down by, um, category for five years. You can see we did have a increase in funding, which was budgeted and planned for. The slight decrease in capital is again because the lottery's included in that. We really were flat on capital. I think, actually, no, this year we're flat. Last year, we had a slight increase in the capital funding. And then, of course, debt services slowly decreasing as planned. Um, of course, it will be going back up with the, um, debt financing we'll do for the Wicker School project. Okay, expenditures for CCCC. Again, you can see the categories broken down. Our total expenditures for them were $3,440,778. That's a 6% increase over the fiscal year 2016, and they make up about 5% of our general fund expenditures. Um, this is still not reflecting the new debt. The new debt, um, will start being paid out, paid on this year. So that'll increase. Bottom line, you can see our total revenues and our total expenditures. Um, our revenues did exceed our expenditures, and we had an increase in our fund balance of just over 1.9 million. Um, I just want to point out to you that that is even after we transferred the $1,664,350 to the Capital Reserve Fund for future debt service of CC, for the CCC bonds. So that's above and beyond that. So we still increased our fund balance 1.9. Now, we had to roll over some projects and some expenditures into this year, so that we have used, um, re-appropriated some of that, obviously. But we had a, um, great year. Our departments really stepped up to the plate and really tried to be conservative. And of course, the tax department worked very diligently to collect revenues. Fund balance history, um, you can see here, the blue bar is our total fund balance. The burgundy bar is the fund balance available number that the state likes to look at. Um, and you can see what your goals are. We have an 8% minimum that is set, um, by the state. That is the green bar down at the bottom. The purple bar is your goal of 14%. Um, that's your floor. And then the target of yours is 18%. And you can see we are actually exceeding that target at this point. Um, now, our financial policy states that we'll transfer money to Capital Reserve. We have not put that in front of you because we have several things we're working on and are using the money, um, will be using the money probably this year. So as of June 30th, 2017, our fund balance available percentage totaled 20.8%, and it was at 17.56 last year. Um, total available fund balance was $14,104,260. That's an increase of 1.9 million over the previous year. Does not equal the exact change in fund balance because it is a combination of other things that make it fund balance available. And just went over those percentages. If you look at us as a percentage of our 2018 budget expenditures, we're still at 19.81%. Statewide average as of 6/30/2016 was 31.57%. But again, remember, we are now in the category with a lot of your coastal counties, and they keep a higher level of fund balance because of emergencies. Okay? So we do need to take that into account. But we wouldn't mind if you get to that level either, though. Okay, as far as debt goes, um, our outstanding debt at June 30th, 2017 was $70,464,549. That is broken down into our COPS of $32,138,000, installment notes of fif, uh, just over 15 million, and then we have the general obligation bonds that we issued last year, $23 million. Here's a chart that shows you the breakdown between Lee County Board of Education, CCCC, and then the general, um, bonds, our general debt that we have. So obviously, the schools still make up a large portion of our debt.
If we, for example, there, I think that many discussions about two possible charter schools coming. That number is probably not going to go up.
Pay for capital funding?
No, no, I didn't think so. We don't have to pay for the buildings for those schools.
Right. What will we have to do? What do you know that?
The Board of Education has to give the per pupil funding...
To the charter schools.
That they get from, from the state and us. But they don't get capital funding.
No, I understand the capital base. What does that do to the Board of Education?
It lowers what they have to pay their, their stu, for their students. But then again, their number of students would be going down along with that.
Supposedly.
Debt levels, um, our financial policy states that we'll have a maximum of 2% of our outstanding debt, um, to our assessed value. As of June 30th, 2017, we were at 1.36% of our total assessed value. So we're still in good shape there. And again, now, the state's policy is 8%, and you've chosen to be at 2. So, um, when we do the Wicker School project, we may be close to that number. Um, actual debt service payments totaled 11.59% of our general fund expenditures. Your maximum is 15%. So we're still in good shape there. Single audit and grants, single audit is another portion of our audit. That's where the auditors come in and examine various, um, social services and our health programs, um, our state, a lot of it's state, federal-funded programs. Um, here in Lee County, we managed $98,745,92 in grant funding between social services, health, um, senior services, and emergency services, um, and some library, a few other departments that get some small grants. DSS accounted for $93,849,168 of that. Now, a big chunk of that's Medicaid, because we still determine eligibility here. It goes on our statements. Next year, the pass-through funds will not be going on the Schedule of Assistance that you see in the back of this. So those numbers will look a little differently. We'll still be determining eligibility, but we won't be reporting it as such, okay? Um, the actual amount that was received by the county was only $6,589,929. So the direct vendor payments of that 93 is $87 million. Programs that were audited this year were Medicaid, low-income home energy assistance, and childcare. And as we stated, um, there were no findings in those programs from anything the auditors reviewed. And, um, I know, I think they reviewed over 100 files in Medicaid, and I think, did they view over 100 each program this year? Yeah, it was over 100, and they did not find any errors. So I think our social services department deserves a lot of accolades for that.
That is really great.
That's fantastic.
They're doing a good job. Um, capital projects, we have several going on. Um, most of them are not strictly ours, though. Stanley Park Nature Center, as of June 30th, um, 2017, had revenues and transfers in of $2,261,477. Expenditures were $1,885,468. Funds remaining were $376,009. Of course, that has come down since then. Health Sciences Center, that's been...
Has that been closed out?
No, sir, it's not been closed out.
Okay.
Okay. The Health Sciences Center, um, you can see there, we had $9,692,000, some change in revenues. Our expenditures at that point were 1.3 million, leaving a funds of about 8.3 remaining as of June 30th. The Vet Tech Project, we had $5,388,000 in revenue, and expenditures are just over a million. So that left you $4,374. Civic Center Projects, $5,380,000 in revenues. Expenditures of only $595,000 at that point, so that's 4.784 remaining. Main Campus and ESTC, we had a revenues of 4.3 for the project. Expenditures were at 1.3, leaving about $2.9 million. Elementary School Facility, you'll see that's showing zero in revenues at this point because we have not done the debt financing. We do have the expenditures that we made for the land. So that puts us in the hole at 373,851. And we did disclose, if you look through the financial statement footnotes, you will see that we did disclose that we have a, um, fund that's in the negative, but that we are planning to do a financing, um, this coming year. This time, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great job.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to work with our departments. They do a great job of, um, their record-keeping and make it a whole lot easier. And my staff and the manager make it very easy for us here, so...
I want to ask the board seat. Are we going to have, and maybe I'm the only one who uses it, but I want to have a much clearer understanding of the funding that might occur if we get a charter school, one or two charter schools, and how it's going to impact the Board of Education. If you're losing money on one hand, surely there's gotta be something that's gonna come back and hit this board as it relates to.
You can speak to this too, but I mean, I know one of the concerns, you know, in reading articles all over the state with the charter schools is, especially in our area, as our population grows, you know, you may get three hundred students that go into a charter school, but we may get four hundred new students.
Right.
So, yeah.
I just think that'd be part of our workshop.
Right, that's a good idea, is maybe get with your counterpart with the schools and kind of give us some more information on that, looking at the budget for next year.
I'll be glad to see what I can get on that.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Good news, thank you.
Okay, we have moved item B to the consent agenda. So, item C, request to appear from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Ms. Pam Glover.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman, and the Commissioners, and Mr. Crumpton. Hope that everyone is doing well. I had to ask a request to come back before you because, if you remember, when I presented back in March the request to present before you, at that time, our board had made our funding decisions for our 2017, 2018 year. And since that time, if you remember, we had actually allocated funding ninety-seven seventy in our administrative budget. The administrative budget is what we use to pay for our food when we have our meetings, our community events, different things like that. We had actually allocated sixty-six thousand six oh one for Project Challenge of North Carolina, who actually provides our restitution and community services program. And we had forty-four thousand six sixty-one for Hope Through Horses, who actually provided services for our Strengthening Families Program, which actually provides a service for not just our young people in the program, but for the parents as well. And then we had forty thousand seven eighty-nine for our Kicking Back, which was also Hope Through Horses, which they actually just worked with the young people in the program. And that was in March. In June, we found out that what had happened is that the state, what, what happens with JCPC is that we do monitoring. We have a, we have subcommittees on the board, and we monitor all of our funded programs. But what we do when we monitor is that we look at their paperwork for what they do for JCPC, their nonprofit programs. What happened, and I got some information because I had to figure out what was going on myself, is that Hope Through Horses actually has a program in Hope County as well as Lee County. And they audited their Hope County location. And when they audited their Hope County location, they saw some things wrong, which prompted them to, to audit their Lee County location. And from there, they actually, the state, chose to pull funding for Hope Through Horses because there was questions about, there was a for-profit as well as a nonprofit program, which our JCPC board was not aware that there was a for-profit program. And monies and different things were just not being handled properly. There was a lease agreement that didn't look accordingly, different things like that. So, to be a good steward of state dollars, because you know, our JCPC dollars are all monies that come from our Department of Public Safety, we had, they pulled the funding, and they're not gonna continue to fund this pro, the state is not gonna continue to fund Hope Through Horses until they're able to get all their ducks in a row, so to speak. And with that being said, we had to put our eighty-five thousand and four hundred dollars is what had been allocated to Hope Through Horses for the seventeen eighteen school year, for the eighteen, seventeen eighteen physical year, because this program has not, they never started functioning this physical year at all. They never started functioning at all. So, we had to, our board voted to put those funds, the eighty-five thousand four hundred, back into unallocated funds. And with that, we had to advertise another RFP just for that eighty-five thousand four hundred. I think you had in your packet where we just was specifically asking for interpersonal skills building, mentoring, teen court, and, and like that. So, that what we realized is that, because even when we, and our RFP was actually advertised from August, from October twenty-seventh, it was advertised in a newspaper. And it's been on our county, it's been on our county website, and it will be there until November twenty-seventh. But what we realized is that we could not go ahead and advertise for our structured day program or mediation, because we knew when January comes, we've got eighty-five thousand dollars, that we're gonna try to get some, to try to fund some program to be able to spend that sum of money between January and June thirtieth. So, that's why when we released the RFP back in, in October, we only selected those four programs to, to solicit for this time. That was one thing. And then the other was, that was our big thing. The other was that we had to, we, we voted to fund our psychological services, where we have Healthy Choices, who actually provides a, excuse the little ears. They, they describe, they, they actually provide a specific type of psychological assessment for our juveniles in the court system. And we had to, we had to fund, we had to advertise for that again. And they were able to get funded this time, and we were able to fund four thousand dollars for them, which is what they have been getting in the past. And that four thousand actually allows them to service ten, ten young people each physical year.
Okay.
And that's it.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Glover?
Pam, I, um-
Yes.
I, you know, I mean, I know that, that's unfortunate with that, because that was a good program. You know, we heard a lot of, or at least when I was on the board, and, and I ran into somebody not too long ago that had a good story to tell about that. You said you, you did the RFP on the twenty-seventh-
Yes.
-of October. Have you gotten any, any-
We've actually received some inquiries. People have been calling and asking questions, but as of today, no one has actually submitted an application on NCI laws.
Okay, is there any, and, and I'm kind of fuzzy, and I know rules change too from year to year, but I mean, is there any way you could reach out to other counties to see some of the programs that they're doing, and maybe contact those organizations?
We can do that again. What we have been doing within, even with Tammy, she has actually shared information about what we have. We've actually been working together to try to see, even though they may not be in Lee County, they can still provide a service to our Lee County young people. And so, we have been reaching out because we do have young people that need to be served.
Absolutely.
And Hope Through Horses was providing a very great program. They really were.
Okay, well, any more questions or comments?
I'm not following. Was Hope County running the program for Lee County?
No, they were, they were running a program for Hope County.
And, and we both got penalized?
Yes.
Well, it-
Yes, both counties, both counties got penalized, yes, sir.
Why did we get penalized?
When they saw the magnitude of things that was wrong in Hope County, that prompted the auditors in the state to look at Lee County, to what they were doing. Not us, but look at what Hope Through Horses and Lee County was doing as well.
It's not us getting penalized.
It's not us.
It's that, that service provider.
That service provider.
So, they can no longer do business? Well, true, yeah, we, we lost the service, true.
We lose the service?
Yes.
So, how long was that program available, how long?
We actually began funding Hope Through Horses the thirteen fourteen physical year.
And things just made part of it?
Yes.
Yeah, but things just went south?
Yes, sir.
Was it changed on their side, or?
It wasn't so much as even with the services, it was their paperwork and the different things. Like, they didn't have the receipts, they didn't have an accurate lease. The different things that they kept pulling for and wanting, they weren't able to provide the information to the point that the state did not feel comfortable to continue funding them at this time.
He just posted.
So, what would happen if you, I mean, the way I understand it now, you have an allocation of eighty-five thousand four hundred to basically spend in six months-
Yes, sir.
-with a thirty percent required local match. If, if you don't spend that, or find a program to utilize that funding, does it just go back to the state?
We will have to return it back to the state, yes, sir. Which doesn't look good, but if that's what we'd have to do. Because one thing we're not gonna do is just give money to anyone.
No, I understand, I hope not.
Or any agency or program.
Well, some of your psychological program, have you spoken with Sandhills to find out if there are other providers that might?
Yes, sir, we actually have a Sandhills representative on the board.
And they're not able to find some additional programs?
Everyone is actually looking. I was actually on the telephone this weekend talking to different people, so everyone's kind of reaching out and trying to find.
I think the chair has given you very good recommendation, that is, looking around at our neighbors and see what they're funding and what good programs are out there, and make a hasty effort to get back in the game, I guess.
Exactly. One thing that we have actually been talking about for years, even since you was on the board, was our, not now, but a structured day program, because we have so many young people when they're suspended. And they're, they're not being supervised, they're just, they're just whatever, on the streets, doing whatever. And another thing would be teen court. Teen court is another good program that we would love to see implemented in Lee County that would help get some young people that are doing little simple things, keep them out of the judicial system.
So, maybe if we would have to forfeit the eighty-five thousand four hundred, we could make the argument to the state that we're trying to set up those programs.
Yes, sir.
So, we would be penalized later. That's a good idea.
Well, whatever we do, let's make sure on our side that we put in some stopgap measures that will check on these programs in advance before the state audits or anybody else audits.
Yes, sir, that is one thing that the state consultant and I and a couple of other people, we have been talking about what we can do on our end to make sure that this does not happen again. And so, there are some more things that we've got to make sure. We didn't ask, they didn't tell us that they were for-profit, or they had a for-profit piece, because we didn't ask. But now, we know certain things that we've got to ask. And instead of our quarterly monitoring, we're gonna start monitoring more often and just looking at everything, not just their paperwork for their participants, but let's just look at everything, so that we can do our audit before the state does their audit.
How many contracts do you have out now?
You mean, for its funded?
For services, yeah.
Right now, we only have, we have Hope, we have our Project Challenge is one of our, they, they provide us with the restitution and community services. And we have Healthy Choices that does our psychological assessments.
Well, let's start checking them.
Yes.
And everybody else that gets a contract.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's what I would recommend. Get ahead of the game.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. And I'll keep you informed.
To approve their request.
Right.
I think they'll revise the budget.
What would you approve?
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
We'll keep them checked.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the request to appear from S3 Housing Connect, Jeffrey Rollins.
I'm all she, Jeffrey, so I'll pitch it. I've been texting you.
I was gonna say Karen.
Haven't been to you all in a long time. My name is Karen Kennedy. I'm the Community Development Manager in your, the Community Development and Planning Department. Jeffrey always has a wonderfully powerful heartfelt story that goes with this request, so I, I will attempt to give you the reasoning behind this request. We had a gentleman that ended up in Sanford and Lee County that had strayed away from his home in Virginia. And he ended up going into one of our shelters, and for some odd reason, got kicked out. And he stayed on the sidewalk on Chatham Street overnight in the rain for several days till one of our local community people and police officers took it upon themselves to put him up in a motel room until we could find out his story and reach out to his family. And then I think Bill Hicks and some others, along with Jeffrey from Johnston Lee, took on taking him to a facility in Wade County until he could get back with his family. So, that prompted a conversation about what do we do in a true emergency situation with someone who is homeless that we would like to help. So, Jeffrey, on behalf of the S3 Housing Connect Homelessness Task Force, reached out to the city council for a fifteen hundred dollar contribution, and is now asking you all for fifteen hundred dollars to place in a fund to be used for one-night stays in hotels for true emergen, excuse me, true emergency situations, with the most of it being a two-night if it happened on a Friday. But Jeffrey and Johnston Lee will screen the applicants and make sure it's vetted and a legitimate case before any of the funds are expended. As you know, Commissioner Sharp and then Mr. Kirkman are on our task force. And this task force has been a wonderful force going on in this community. And Commissioner Sharp, if you want to add to this request, welcome any input.
Well, I, yeah, I, I agree with Karen. I mean, I think we, you know, a one-time request, I think it would, I've seen the need for it, and been to all the meetings, and, and Jeffrey was here, he would give us a heartfelt request. Not that yours wasn't, but it's the same story.
I don't take it personally. I don't even look similar to Jeffrey.
Yeah, there's been a lot of hard work going on there, and yeah, I agree with Karen.
I've got a question that says, and I'm just asking, says, one day, or until housing can be arranged, or three days if it's on the weekend, have you had success in finding somewhere in one day?
Yes, Jeffrey has a landlord list, and then, this is truly a hotel fund, though. This is to reach out to local hotels where he has contractual relationships with for emergency situations.
Who's gonna control the funds?
Johnston Lee Community Action. The contribution will go to them, and it'll be managed similar to when we did the Simmons Street relocation. And I think you all received your notebooks. That's been a wonderful project, and anytime you want updated information, please go to the website, s3housingconnect.com.
Do you recall where Johnston Lee got their funds for Wall Street?
The city.
Give them how much was?
Twenty thousand, Marshall?
What's that?
Wall Street, Simmons Street. Simmons Building on Wall Street.
It lies up to eight thousand, was that sound right?
Twenty-two people. If I tell you, Mr. Reeves, I'll be wrong, but the city allocated that entire- money to relocate up to twenty-two people, yes.
This is kind of an emergency request, is this what this is?
No, it's just a request to put in a fund for emergency. It's a new- It's a new program that we have found out through S three Housing Connect is really an issue when people end up on the streets. And, and Jeffrey will be the first person to tell you that, you know, even after it hit the paper from the first request of the city, you know, he said their phone was ringing off the hook and it was people locally, they're already in situations trying to reach out for it and there'll be a screening process.
It'll be dire emergencies, right.
Is that an individual decision or a committee decision? How is that?
I think there's policies that Johnston Lee has. I think it'll be staff of Johnston Lee.
Okay, so the funding comes from other sources and they'll control the criteria that, who qualifies and that not qualifies?
Yes, sir. And he has criteria. I can get you a copy of that if you need that.
For example, if you, you, you have limited funds and you got a woman with children and a, a single man, then how, who makes that call? If you can't do both, you can only do one, who would make the call?
It seems like Jeffrey was the one making that call.
That was my understanding.
And it seems like, you know, he put a priority on, you know, a parent with, with kids and, you know, things such as that.
What about future funding going forward after this?
Yeah, I would never stand here and tell you this will be the last time you'll see S three Housing Connect in front of you because then I would be remiss, because I have a feeling this initiative for the homelessness task force is gonna be around for a while.
Um, do you think, has he reached out to some of the hotels? Do you think maybe they would give a discounted rate for something like this?
He has a relationship with several of the local hotels, like some of the ones that are like the power.
Understood.
Put an adjective to describe it, but some of those that are cheaper and things such as that, yeah.
Electricity running water, roof over their head.
Gets them off the street for a night till, because if you understand that Johnston Lee has another program, a rapid rehousing program, where he assesses the family in a more holistic way and assists them with more permanent housing, this is just for the one, one night and then he puts them in his other programs.
Okay, that, this is probably a little bit off the, this discussion, but wasn't there a piece of property on Linden Avenue that was available at one point or possibly?
It is. That is owned by the Housing Authority and the Housing Authority Director is on one of the committees for S three Housing. And that has been one of the projects that the Resource Development Committee has been asked to find pre-development monies for. So there's an opportunity for three two-bedroom, but there are no funds available for the preliminary engineering cost, architectural design, and the environmentals. So that's just a project that's out there that does not have funding.
They have not transferred that property to us, therefore we have not transferred it to the city. If you remember the last time that property came up, so they, they kept ownership of it.
They be in the Housing Authority?
Yes.
Yes. Because Shannon has come to the task force.
All the local churches involved in this one-day rental thing too, I, I feel, I, I seem to remember that our church had calls of people looking for someone to put them up for one night or a couple of nights, families and what have you.
That's just people reaching out to the church. It won't be a part of this initiative. Are you speaking of maybe family promise?
No, I, I, I know our church has actually put people up in
Yes.
motels at night that didn't have anywhere to stay. I know we've done that.
I think that's an individual church.
So I know we've got it.
Well, what do we need to do to get back on this Linden Avenue property?
I can't speak to your piece of the puzzle, but I know that the committee, the Housing Task Force, it's not true, wrong task force. Homelessness Task Force has asked Shannon for a detailed budget of the costs that would be needed to turn the units into temporary transitional units. And so she was coming up with costs for monies that she could get from different sources and pre-development monies.
Waiting, waiting on her report essentially.
Her report, but then there needs to be a funding mechanism.
Right, right.
Or several funding mechanisms, because she can get a, a piece of the construction loan. It's the pre-development cost she has, not have resources for.
Okay, last question. Do you have an answer?
I know, I'll never pitch it again. I had decided I should have just sat in the back and acted like Jeffrey just didn't show up. Too bad.
I mean, I, I, I feel your pain when you said, I kept texting this guy. Now, where are you?
Well, I'm gonna text him for real, huh?
I don't blame you, but, uh, that, that pre-cost you're talking about, does she have a figure on what that would cost?
She's working on that.
All right. And I only ask because I, you know, I tend to favor looking at things that that would be moving in what I consider to be the right direction. You have, we're in a situation where you're gonna have people dropping in on Lee County and Sanford from all over the country looking for a whole little, for a night or two or whatever. That's gonna happen. This isn't just started. This started years and years ago. So we've got to be considerate about what we're investing in, that's all I'm suggesting. And then after, if the board chooses to invest, we've got to have some checks and balances in that program as well. So you, I'm not comfortable just giving out a donation just for the sake of giving a donation. Can't fix all the problems, but we can certainly address looking at how we might better improve our own situation.
And I feel that S three Housing Connect, Commissioner Sharp, correct me if I'm wrong, has, has put in place a holistic approach to address the homelessness issue. With a committed group of thirty-five to forty people who are meeting monthly, actively working on this situation, all the nonprofits, businesses, churches are all in this conversation. I think we've brought everybody to the table. You had at your place, I think, the open house imitation for Wednesday for Bread of Life. And I just see a strategic approach going forward to address this issue.
One of my things, manager, I hear, and you're a great pitch hitter. I have to give it to you. You really are. You've done a fantastic job. But I will say this, there are working people who need assistance oftentimes. And, and they're trying to make forty hours every week. So we've got a lot of things before us. And in, in my opinion, we ought not be rushing into doing, setting up programs that may not last. We ought to seriously look at what we're doing and give it full thought and not just make hasty investments. That's my thing.
Sure, and, and not to belabor the problem, but I mean, just, I have not, um, been able to attend any of the meetings. But, you know, my understanding of this was this really wasn't setting up a program as much as this is just, you know, a contribution from our board and the city to create, for lack of a better word, a, a bridge solution while we work out things perhaps with the Linden Avenue property or if we go in a different direction just as we get into winter time and, you know, we would have a family on the street sleeping at the library or, you know, like this elderly gentleman that had lost his way that had some issues going on and the shelters are full, you know, it's I, I, I don't see this, I don't know. I mean, I don't see this as being something that, you know, every month, you know, Jeffrey or you or someone from S three comes and says we've exhausted our emergency fund and we need another donation.
I think that's the question.
I understand.
Is this a one-time thing?
I asked that question. The answer is no.
It can be, it's one-time.
Come on up here, Marshall, if you want to weigh in.
And I'm not sure if I'm gonna make it worse.
Karen's asking for the second pitch hitter.
Bring a checkbook in, all right?
Let, let, let's just hope Jeffrey's okay.
So this may be a swing and strikeout too, but I'm, I'm gonna try to add, just going from memory and, and just to that comment. Because my understanding what this request was is partly was a stopgap measure. Because if you all know, the Bread of Life Shelter, of course, is supposed to be opening very soon, around the first of December. And that's supposed to be an old, what's the right term, Karen?
Extreme weather. Extreme weather.
Extreme weather facility. So in all actuality, the use of this money was supposed to be just simply a stopgap until we get to that point because that's gonna be like a twenty-bed facility that should be able to handle most of these situations. It's a low barrier, if not a no barrier type situation. So essentially, anyone off the street, they get them in there, get them in there for the night. So I think the idea here was to have, just like you said, some type of really small amount in the event, for whatever reason, maybe they couldn't get in that shelter, it's not open, something like that, and we had a weather event come up. That this would serve kind of as bridge to get us there.
That, that was my understanding and talking to them.
And I don't know if everyone understands that it's below thirty-two or above ninety-seven. It's not a full-time, open all the time, right.
The, the, the great thing would be, you know, if, 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 if we choose, the city chooses to set up this emergency fund, that we're here at the same time next year and things have gotten better and we have, you know, the other shelter open and the money's not been touched or, you know, very little of it's been used. And then we can maybe, you know, just, I, I, I know, I, I'm being optimistic.
This is good.
No, try, try. But I mean, I, that, that, I understand your concerns. But, but that's, my understanding was, as, as Marshall said, it was stopgap was what I was looking for, thank you. But, you know, just kind of a very short-term in-between.
I'm just saying, I'm all for the stop.
Understood.
I'm not opposed or objecting to what anybody's saying. But these are long-term problems. Long-term. And I personally feel very strongly about the Linden Avenue property. That we've been, I think I mentioned that property back in June.
Right, is that in some right news?
And we still don't really know what's what on that piece of property. But I won't stand in the way of what the board wants to do.
I'm gonna say this, I, I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner. It's a, it's a long-term problem. And we're not, I, I don't guess we're gonna try to solve that tonight, but if this one-time fifteen hundred dollars will help, I'll make the motion to give them the fifteen hundred dollars.
Any more questions or discussion?
You, you wanna, I want to make sure I understand. Are you saying that?
And I'm hoping it's a one-time thing.
No, but you, you will match.
City.
Is that what you meant to say?
Well, I'll say this, I, I, I think I'm telling you right. We've had several requests at our church and we set up a fund and we authorize our preacher to help folks that come in looking for a one, just one night. You know, with, some, some of them have their family and some it's just one, but we set up that fund and he uses it for that. Undoubtedly, some of these folks don't know to contact him.
My question is, is your motion to match the city?
To what?
Match the city on the fifteen hundred dollars.
If the city's gonna do that, yeah.
City's already approved their.
Yeah, the city's already approved it.
All right.
So we'll match.
You'll match that, yeah.
Well, we'll be standing with our hand out to get it back.
Okay, any more questions or discussion?
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, good discussion. All right. E, request from Four C Machinery LLC for abatement of late-list penalty. Michelle?
Hey, good evening. Good evening. Um, I have before you tonight a request from Four C LLC. For, this will actually be for refund request for the amount of late-list penalty they were charged. Four C Machinery LLC failed to timely file their twenty-seventeen business personal property listing for which they were granted an extension to file until March fifteenth, twenty-seventeen. Their CPA, Corrigan Kraus, sent an unsigned return via email to the tax office on March thirtieth. So that's fifteen days past their filing date after being contacted by the tax office. So we did contact them to find out, well, we had not received it. The signed original was mailed to the tax office, postmarked March thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, and received in our office on April fourth, twenty-seventeen. Per, per North Carolina General Statute one oh five three twelve, a ten percent late-list penalty was calculated and added to their twenty-seventeen tax bill. And then you have several documents in your packet to go along with the request. A copy of the resolution that was adopted by this board. Giving some guidelines that you could consider on a case-by-case basis. Adopted in December twenty thirteen. You also have a letter from Corrigan Kraus requesting the refund because the taxes, the tax bill has been paid. Copy of the tax bill, copy of both the unsigned return and the signed return. And then some of the statutes regarding one oh five three twelve, the discovery statute, and then statutes regarding taxpayer remedies and what you can as a board do. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Just as a note, all current taxes are, they are current on all taxes. So this would be a refund issue. This is for leased equipment that's located on Mount Piscata Church Road at Hydro Two.
What's our board policy? Isn't there something about first timer and five years? What do we have on that? Do you have a question, remember?
Yes, sir. She has it right there in front of her, she's gonna tell you.
The guidelines that you adopted were if a listing is received or postmarked within the first five days following the close of the annual listing period, then you may reduce it up to ninety percent. So it does not qualify for that. If the listing is received or postmarked within thirty days of the close of the annual listing period, you may choose to reduce the penalty up to fifty percent. And then you also had a stipulation that the penalty would not exceed five thousand dollars, which it does not. You wanted to know if they had any late filings in the last five consecutive years.
It's never been open a year, is there?
No, yeah, they've only filed two years. It's only been there two years. And then, of course, again, the final statement there is that you have the right to compromise, settle, or adjust anything outside these provisions or guidelines on a case-by-case basis.
Did they give any written reasoning for missing or or not filing on time?
They did not realize, in their letter, they say the taxpayer did not realize that the extended date was March fifteenth. And did not initially file. And you have a copy in there also of the document that they received when they requested an extension that granted them an extension until March fifteenth.
And then they missed that?
Yes, sir.
I think the fifty percent they qualified for under our, under our people was that?
They wouldn't meet that.
They wouldn't meet that.
If you so true choose to implement that.
We don't want to be unemotional about things. We can follow our guidelines and, and we'll that takes things out of people's floors, but then they, if that's the case, I wouldn't mind sending them a letter stating that fact that that doesn't work for the next, how many years?
Five or coming to you.
So the next five years, then you if it doesn't, I mean, things happen when businesses open up all the time. Businesses tough. Businesses tough.
I really don't like the, things happen when you're using a CPA.
Oh, listen, I, I, I've been told that, that I owe Illinois unemployment taxes of seventeen hundred dollars. I have business in Illinois.
Oh, no.
Well, you might be saved then.
Well, I know, it happens all the time, even with CPAs.
I, I guess my point is, I like the fact that we're able to make adjustments. My preference is to give that to individuals more so than, than corporations or big business using CPAs. I'm not opposed in this case.
I mean, I would say that I'm a business, I use a CPA too, I'm not, I'm not a big business. I don't know how big this business is or isn't, but.
Well, they're a leasing company.
Well, I guess my point is, if I got to pay the CPA then, and he misses the timeline, he have to pay, he have to pay the bill. Is all I'm suggesting here, but.
I don't know if that's the case or not, right?
I don't, and that's why I'm willing to listen to a motion that comes across the board.
Anyone here with this?
I like to go just follow our sidelines and, and bait fifty, I think, is that right?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. And then it just keeps it smooth and fair across the board. And we don't have to worry about, you know, figuring anybody or figuring somebody else in the future.
Well, my, my only issue is, if you read our policy, it says the Board of Commissioners may reduce the late listing. It's not, we will reduce the late listing. And what bothers me is, for whatever reason, they knew they weren't gonna have their listing on time. So they filed for the extension. And I don't know how many of us on this board have to list property, but it's no fun. And Mary is really helpful in her office if you have to do that. You know, and when they got the paperwork from us saying they've been granted the extension, it's very clear when the due date is. And so, you know, they weren't gonna do it on time like the rest of the citizens and the businesses in the county. So they filed for the extension, they didn't pay attention to the extension date. And I don't know when or if they would have provided it if you hadn't called and said, what's going on? You missed your date on your extension. And then if you look at our abstract, when they did send the listing fifteen days late, it wasn't even signed, which makes it not really official, because they didn't sign it. So, you know, then we go on to April fourth. The late penalty was assessed dated July twenty-sixth, and the office didn't receive the money until August the first, you know.
Well, it wasn't, the payment wasn't late because it's a twenty-seventeen bill.
Okay, okay.
Just, just clarify that.
Is that why, so we have the provision of five years? Now you got the chance to get your act together, is it one-time?
One-time, bad.
This is a one, I mean, things have, I pay, have to pay quarterlies, I have to pay monthlies, I have to pay, I mean, these things come up before you know it. May fifteenth is here in a couple of days and I gotta, I gotta go and get that done. It's, it's a headache, it's a, it's, without a doubt, it's a headache, but that, that's my only concern. You know, I know I have to deal with it, as many small businesses have to. Things come up that we may not understand or within their lives, or even in the CPAs, like, I don't know. That's why I think we don't allow this each and every year, is you need to be good for five years, don't bother writing this letter again. You know, I, I, I made my motion.
He's already made the motion.
I made the motion.
Yeah, to, to.
To allow that fifty percent to follow our guidelines and please let them know that, uh, there is no, you have to pay in five years, don't, don't write this letter again. Yes, you go for five years.
Any more questions or concerns?
Fifty percent is what now, fifty percent of the refund?
That's gonna be like seven hundred bucks in, you know, it's a seven.
Six fifty, something like that, around six hundred and fifty dollars, basically. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Alright, um, let's see, we made F and G to the consent agenda. The budget amendment, H, Ms. Minter.
Yes, ma'am, on page one oh five, we have budget amendment number four for this fiscal year. This budget amendment appropriates a hundred and two thou, excuse me, a hundred thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars in funds received from a homeland security grant for emergency services to purchase a remotely operated underwater vehicle. It appropriates thirty thousand dollars into professional legal services into the Board of Commissioners' budget for legal services related to the Board of Commissioners and other boards that they serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. And in recreation, we're appropriating forty thousand dollars for the purchase of land adjacent to Sand Lee Park. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
What does this thing look like?
That question I cannot answer for you, and I noticed Mr. Seagro's left without waiting for his budget amendment to be considered, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
It, yeah, it, I think there was, was there a picture in the stuff that was in the earlier section?
Underwater submarine that, that basically has like a GoPro thing on that.
I want to go for a ride on this thing.
Speaking of.
You're definitely too big for that thing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can ride on it. Follow behind.
It sends a picture back to them, so they're viewing it, so they, you know, like Jack Gusto kinda stuff.
Okay, any more questions or comments on this? Okay, all those in favor of the budget amendment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, item I, and I think you have that abstract at your seat, is consider property purchase. And that would be dismissed?
Um, yeah, the abstract is at your seat, and along with the abstract, it's an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property. This property is located, the legal description is Zero Oakwin Road Lot Two B, and the PIN number is nine six six two three eight zero six seven eight. It is currently owned by a gentleman of Florida, Gordon Boyer, and it is in the, near the Sand Lee Park, so it's right in the.
In a joint.
Right, a joint Sand Lee Park. Um, so we're looking at purchasing six point eighty-three, eight-three acres of land, and the purchase price is thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. So at this time, just asking the board to approve the purchase and authorize the chair and staff to take the necessary steps to finalize the sale.
Any questions or comments?
This is six acres.
Six point eight.
Six point eight.
I think the description's attached with the.
The picture's a little fuzzy, but that last.
Yeah, the picture's a little black, it didn't show up the best, but then behind it will have the information, the PIN number, acres.
The last picture, I think, is really the best, but last page. It's where it's located.
And our current property adjoins on two sides. The home that you see there, we will now essentially land lot.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay, any more questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, item J, Ms. Reece.
Yes, ma'am. I want to ask the board if you would support a motion from me regarding the concealed carry, discussion that broke out a month ago or so. I, I would say to the board and all its board members, that we're in the position of, whether we like it or not, we're employers. And we have a duty and responsibility to look after the staff that work for Lee County. And while my personal views about concealed carry are personal to me, but in this regard, I think that it's time that we allowed staff to have a say as well. And I want to ask board members to join me in requesting that we do a survey, staff survey, this month, and address the issue of concealed carry in our December meeting. And let's make a decision in twenty-seventeen and try and get some other things done in twenty-eighteen. And if that's not clear, I'll try it again. But all I'm asking is that we go ahead and authorize the manager to delegate someone to conduct the survey of all the staff. Now, in my opinion, that places that burden on the individual staff members. You either do or you don't. And it can be very private, I don't know how you want to structure it, or how it should be structured. But I think that's one way that we can all get away from this accusation that we're trying to take somebody's gun. That's not what it's about. It is about employers, the state does it, the federal government does it, they protect their employees. The same people that write the bills that I don't always agree with protect their employees. And we have a, not a similar, we have the same responsibility, the very same responsibility. So my motion is to authorize the manager to delegate a responsible person to conduct the survey of all the county employees as it relates to whether they bore or against concealed weapons being carried in our, on certain properties. That's the.
Have we done a survey before related to that?
We just.
We didn't do a form.
We didn't do a formal survey, but.
Was it anonymously, or not, not.
We can do a survey monkey and make this one anonymous, so.
That's fine.
Make sure you get the direction.
But we'll probably ask more questions than if you're just in favor of concealed carry. We'll, we'll ask things about security and some other things and, and just make it, you know, so it's, it's more than just about that item.
My other addition maybe to your motion would be if, if, it wouldn't just be a survey, but we've got really smart people working for us, and for the county, and, you know, give them a chance in the survey to make suggestions. Because they may come up with something that we haven't thought about before. They're working in their departments daily and they may, you know, have a great idea that we, you know, necessarily wouldn't come up with here.
That'll make it a great expensive idea.
Well.
Survey, so we can talk about it before the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Or at our retreat, I, I think Commissioner Dodson had wanted that to be one of our retreat issues. And I think having. Well, I, I, I think, I think having that information from all of our employees going into that would be great.
I wanted to address the issue in December, we got the results in December.
Okay.
And we still need to discuss it in January, fine, but let's get it over with and be done and move on to.
Well, we're getting ready to talk about the meeting schedule in December.
Okay.
We'll work that out. I believe we can get it done. Looking at the calendar.
Yes, we need to, um, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion for the manager to conduct the survey on concealed carry and security issues? And suggestions by the county staff? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Reece. Alright, um, Ms. Minter?
Financial report. Yes, this, now we get to talk about the current year. Before you, you have the financial report for the month of October, twenty-seventeen. As you will see, we're still running a little bit behind on our property tax revenues compared to the same timeframe last year. And Michelle and I have confirmed that we are, last year, we had a major taxpayer pay their bill in August. They have not paid it so far this year. But we're continuing to monitor for that. Other than that, we've recently reviewed our tax base and feel good about the numbers, so it's just a matter of timing. Sales tax, remember that we run three months behind, so you only have a one month showing there. As far as other issues go, we have looked at our expenditure target of thirty-three point three three percent. We have narrowed down the number of departments that are exceeding that target at this point. Governing body still is due to dues paid to the NCAA, Triangle Area RPO, and Triangle J. Also, IT is exceeding due to annual maintenance contracts, equipment purchases, and insurance premiums. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on the financial report. If none, you also have the sales tax reports for the first month of the fiscal year that we have collected. Again, we are showing the positive growth, we're at approximately four point nine two percent on Article thirty-nine, sales tax. And overall, we're up at about five point three three percent for the same timeframe as last year. There are no questions, that's it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good news.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, county managers.
Yes, ma'am, I wrote down a couple of extra items, so, so what you, what you have in front of you may go a little long. The Colton Road Water Project, we're getting close to putting that out the bid. One of the things that's kind of held us up a little bit is the city is has, is changing the size of the line that goes down Amos Bridges Road, uh, due to the hotel that's going in Hawkins there. They need to have a twelve-inch line instead of a six-inch, so all that's gonna be done at this time. So actually, that will help us a little bit on that. So I'm glad to see that getting done. Courthouse renovations project, we're in negotiations with Mosley, hope to present that contract to you in December. We have RFQs in hand for the Kiwanis Children's Park and OT Sloan Design. And once again, we'll be making a recommendation to the board at the December fourth meeting on who to hire for that. So my additional items, number one, it was brought up earlier about, you know, us working with Chatham. Just wanted to let you know that Dr. Yule is working on our plan as we speak. And I'm waiting on a proposal from Chatham, on, to work with them on a legal remedy for our code of ordinances and our UDO to cover those issues. So waiting on that from them as an update. I didn't make any comments when we went over the financials, but I want to talk about our fund balance. And so you saw some growth there and that we're over our percentage. If you remember back in the budget, I was making a recommendation that we needed to raise that percentage. Obviously, I felt good at that time. But one of the reasons that we're trying to increase the fund balance is to do pay-as-you-go capital projects. So just remember, we have the courthouse renovations coming up and we have some park renovations coming up. So you have some cash and we'll be able to use that to pay for our improvements in the future, so that's a good thing. So I get to the upcoming meetings, and I was reminded over the weekend that the Sanford Christmas Parade is on December fourth. Well, we're supposed to meet on December fourth, and that's not gonna work. So the board needs to decide when they want to meet in December, whether we want to push back to December eleventh and just meet once in December, or have that as the first meeting, and our second meeting would be December eighteenth. Or push the meeting to Tuesday, December fifth, or whatever. The board would like to do.
We have a, do we have workload usually in December?
Well, we would have, if we have one meeting in December, it will be kind of a long. Well, we would have, if we have one meeting in December, it will be kind of a long agenda because we have some things working that you would have a long agenda.
Is--
But you would stay longer for one night instead of meeting twice.
So do the eleventh, is that what you're proposing?
I'm just going to add that.
Yes, or we would do the fifth and the eighteenth. And the eighteenth is, you know, kind of the start of the Christmas holiday, and some folks may be trying to travel.
Right.
I like one.
On the eleventh?
That's why I'm not looking at you.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at Zach now going, you know, we, we, we meet the first, the second, or the third Monday of the month now, the way they--
I'll be here.
Eleventh, is that okay with everybody, even though it's, I mean--
Yeah, that's good.
Is that good for everybody? Okay.
That's good. That gives us a little extra time to get some things together. It'll give us time to, to get the survey done and, and get that prepared for you for the discussion on the eleventh. So that probably works out well for us. And I'm not aware of any upcoming public hearings that--
Yeah, I'm not sure what the planning board would have. We'll, we'll work through it.
Okay.
So I think that's--
Do we have to have a short one on the eighteenth?
I don't think we have any.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, so I guess we need a motion to just meet one time in December?
Yes, ma'am.
A motion that we meet one time in December, on December eleventh.
Okay.
Don't move it.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. All righty. Make sure I've got my calendar right.
No, you're right, yeah.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner comments. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Crumpton, is that? Okay.
I saved the voting on for last.
Okay. All righty. Commissioner comments. Commissioner connect.
I'm trying to think, wasn't ready for it.
I'm sorry.
No. I know where they're at. Just keep people in prayers. There's been some, obviously some yeah, people that have gone through some things in the, in the country, so just keep the prayers up for them.
Just want to thank my fellow commissioners for that vote and that healthy discussion on that fifteen hundred dollars. It's much appreciated. Anything to please.
It was good, it's good. What's going on?
Yeah, it was a good discussion.
So I want to thank the R and R team. I think that's the recognition team for the county. I got a very nice birthday card in my packet today, so I thank y'all for that. Now, I know Doc's going to talk about trash because we already talked about it, but I told him, I left work today, and I picked up candy wrappers on the sidewalk at work. And so it's like it's, it's become a--
Make you a suspect.
I, I actually picked them up. So I'm, I'm not the suspect. But, you know, it is a problem. Docs have addressed it, and I've seen it all over the county. So I, I really want, you know, the law enforcement to consider fining people for dumping trash. And I'd like for Zach to put it on the front page.
We have it three times.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I appreciate that, but don't let up. And--
You have a big paper on it.
I do. I do. And then I forgot an item, you know, I've said this before. I still get calls as far as to water issues within the county, and I know that the county is not in the water business, but I still, you get a request from Hunter Farm Road every week. And I've got a gentleman that contacts me quite a lot out in the Deep River area in my district about broadband issues. And he stays on top of what's going on, and Mr. Crumpton's aware of it. So I appreciate the responses I've been getting from Kyle and his group. And, and, you know, in trying to address this individual's issue. But I want us on the retreat to also look at some of our policies as far as to abandoned residences, mobile homes, et cetera. And, you know, the rundown areas. I, I get a request about that. I've had a couple in the last few months, and so I've talked to Marshall, and I appreciate his guidance. But, and I realize it's a very touchy subject, and it's hard to, it's hard to deal with that. And it's, it's going to be a hard topic when we have it, so please keep that in mind.
You know, and, and response to that, one thing you may want to do is just start to identify, if nothing else. You start identifying them, and then as we move forward, look at policies that might be appropriate to address. And one quick one is, I remember a place out here on Senator Church Road, no, actually, it's Thomas Road, abandoned mobile home. Unfortunately, family couldn't afford to, to do anything with. Family worked, got themselves hooked out, but--
I think that would be the case in a lot of instances.
Yeah, you gotta have a little history on some of it.
Exactly. Thank you.
One thing I want to talk about is our, our policy on people using our facilities for meetings. And I think we need to look at the fact that we have people calling, setting up meetings. And it's my understanding if it's a board, the chair calls for a meeting, not individual board members. And normally, a chair won't call for a meeting unless they got a quorum. If they don't have a quorum, then they'll call for a meeting. And we've had a couple of meetings called for to use our facilities where they didn't have a quorum and didn't actually have a meeting. And, you know, I don't know what that cost to us, if we had lights on, or we had people moving chairs around or setting it up. But anyway, I think we need to look at that and make sure when someone calls or let them write a request that it's signed by the chair or the person that's in charge of that particular board.
Because sometimes other groups may want to use the facility, and they get turned away.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, two quick things. I want to commend these children here. About the most distant I have ever seen at a meeting anywhere.
Hey, I don't stink either.
Got a really good mom.
Really good. And the other thing is, I invite all of you to watch Carolina Panthers tonight.
That's a reminder of us. For our closed session. Okay. I'll, I'll try to power through mine really quickly. Since we moved item F, and I'll look at the manager, Mr. Spivey, make sure I'm doing this right. Because of the personnel change, the current scale house hours are Monday through Friday, eight to four, and Saturday, eight to twelve. As of December first, 2017, first day in December, those hours will be Monday through Wednesday, eight to four, closed on Thursday, Friday, eight to four, and Saturday, eight to twelve. And I'm assuming we'll post these as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so just wanted to make sure we got that out there sort of--
We'll use our social media and website to, to get it done.
All right. Just wanted to make sure I took care of that.
And a hard sign out at the location.
And kind of moving towards that, we talked about trash a little bit. I will take just a moment to tell this story. We had a large amount of trash down, down Salem Church Road on the farm. And our nephew looked through the bags of trash and found some, a name that was repeated a lot in the trash. And so he called the Sheriff's Department, and they came out and said they would go call on the person. And they did. And the person came out, and it actually looked better than-- There, there were a couple of other things that had gotten tossed out earlier that we just hadn't had a chance to pick up yet. They got that, too. And it was the same story, I think I've told you guys before, that we have the problem on the farm. You know, this gentleman had hired somebody to go and take the trash. So, you know, do, I don't, do we, are we able to give a receipt at the landfill?
We, we only, we don't take the trash, don't take your household trash.
No, I mean, this was a, this was going to the landfill.
If it was going to the landfill--
They would get waste injuries, a waste man. We can't take any trash out of a landfill.
You mean it's like leaf and limb?
I don't--
Yard debris?
It, no, it was everything.
You, yeah, see, that one--
Oh, it wouldn't have gone to us. Okay.
If, if it, if it went to the recycling center, it would not have received. But if it was taken to waste injuries or waste management, we would have, we, you would--
They would have gotten a receipt.
Okay.
It would came back to our office and said--
Okay.
But we'd have to know who it was.
Well, that's what I was going to say, if we didn't give a receipt, we needed to, you know, at least that might help solve part of the problem. But, but anyway, I, I wanted to thank the Sheriff's Department because they did, I mean, you know, they, they came out later that afternoon and took a look at what was going on and just paid a call on the person. And, you know, maybe we just need to, all of us, you know, do more of that. You know, you see big bags of trash that somebody, and I know it's not pleasant, but, you know, if, if we start kind of doing a little investigating as private citizens and, you know, try to figure out maybe where it comes from and let the Sheriff's Department know, or Sanford Police Department or Broadway, you know, they, they're really great about going out and talking to the people. And what we've found is, once it's brought to their attention, and every experience we've had, it's been somebody they've had go take it for them, and, you know, it gets cleaned up. So I also want to thank Lisa and her staff for a great report. That's always nice. And last but not least, we won't see each other, we won't be together officially until after Thanksgiving. And I'm very thankful for this board. It's a pleasure to start with everybody. Very, very, very thankful for our staff. You make us look good. You really do. And I just wish everybody a peaceful and, and joyful Thanksgiving. We've got a lot of problems, as Andre alluded to, a lot of folks hurting and, and angry and pointing fingers. And I don't even like to watch the news much anymore. But I look at these three on the front row, like Commissioner Reeves said, and I got a lot of hope. It's, we still live in the best place, in my opinion, in the world, and we've got a lot of good things going on. So, you know, from here till the end of the year, let's try to focus on the good things and the things we have in common with each other. And, and let's stress those rather than the things that may be different. Because we've got a lot of work to do to make sure you guys have a good future. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, one eleven A three to consult with our attorney, to reserve the attorney's life privilege. Also, per North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, Doc one one A four, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of a business. And also, per North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, Doc one one A five, to discuss the acquisition of real property.
All right. Okay. Need a vote? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are in closed session. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.